The June 4th, 2019 Vernon Hills Village Board Meeting to Order. A roll call vote please.
Trustee Takaka.
Here.
Trustee Schultz.
Here.
Trustee Brown. Trustee Markwart.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
President Byrne.
We have a quorum.
Mr. Clerk, at this time I'd like to nominate Trustee Cook to be President pro tem until such time as the Village President makes an appearance.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. There's no further discussion. Roll call vote please.
Trustee Takaka.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Brown. Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Congratulations.
Motion carries. Alright. So we have a roll call. The meeting is called order. Would everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay. I will not move over there because I know his honor is on the way, so we'll just save things at the front. Citizens wishing to address the board, is there anyone that wants to talk about something that's not on the Committee of the Whole later on? Because if it is, we'll give you time then to talk.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Tom Rose. I'm a Boy Scout in our local Boy Scout troop, Troop 273. And for my citizenship in the community merit badge, I'm required to attend a meeting such as this, or a library board meeting, some sort of public meeting that is important to our community, and take notes on the proceedings so I can be informed. Just want to let you know why I'm here.
Thank you. Welcome. Okay, anyone else, citizen wishing to address the board? Alright, then in that case, first item under the Village President's report is a proclamation congratulating Rose Sheridan, IESA 2019 state champion in the 800-meter track. Want to come on up?
Go right up to the altar right here.
And if anybody wants to come and take pictures, feel free to come around behind.
Donny, Shannon.
If you'd like.
Come on up and come right up on the backside if you wish, or wherever you'd like. You can come right, if you want to take a picture.
Yeah, if you want to take a picture. And we have a proclamation congratulating Rose Sheridan on her Illinois Elementary School Association State Championship in the 800 meters. Rose Sheridan attended Hawthorne Middle School South where she was on the eighth grade track team. And Rose started out in cross-country in sixth grade and was a leader on the team for the last three years. Rose and her team have been a state qualifier all three years. Coached by Laura Reiner and Laura Guest, the Hawthorne South Track Team competed in the Illinois Elementary School Association State Championship meet on May 17th and 18th in Grayslake, Illinois. And Rose raced in the 2019 IESA State Series where she took second place in the 1600 meters with an unbelievable time of five minutes and 18 seconds. And Rose ran the 800 meters, and it being her last eighth grade event, Rose ran with a time of two minutes 20.32 seconds to win the IESA 2019 State Championship at 800 meters. Therefore, Roger L. Byrne, President and the Board of Trustees of the Village of Vernon Hills hereby proclaim that Rose Sheridan be congratulated for her IESA 2019 State Championship in the 800 meters dated this fourth day of June 2019.
Speech, Rose.
And if you'd like to, you may say something.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Rose. I've known Rose since she was a baby, so.
Well, and the other thing, between Rose and Emma, the other, the girl that qualified, just the two of them, what did they finish, Laura? Seventh? Yeah, seventh place, just the two of them compiled enough points to finish seventh in the team standings in state, so. So congratulations. Okay.
And no, her father was not an elite athlete, so just for the record.
Okay, Village Manager, Special Board Meeting?
Yeah, just two quick announcements. As everyone has probably seen or heard in the media, Centennial Real Estate Company, the developers of Hawthorne Shopping Center, will be hosting a town hall meeting at the closed Carson Store on Tuesday, June 18th at 5:30 PM. Everyone is invited to come in here and see what the developers are proposing. And this will also be a special meeting of the Village Board that evening.
So is that the Carson's attached to the mall, or is that the Carson's furniture?
No, it's the Carson's in the mall.
Attached to the mall, not the furniture store.
Attached to the mall, okay. And then the second announcement is since June 18th is also our regularly scheduled Village Board meeting. We've moved our next Village Board meeting to Thursday, the following Thursday, June 20th, at seven o'clock here in the Village Hall. Thank you.
Alright. Assistant Village Manager, the Hawthorne 2.0 website introduction?
Is our village webpage with a link titled Hawthorne 2.0. Discussion regarding the redevelopment of Hawthorne Mall has created excitement, conversation, many questions, and a consistent desire by many in our community for additional information on a variety of topics related to this project. The intent of this page is to ensure an authoritative source exists that keeps the public informed of the many aspects of this project. This site can be accessed from the village homepage than by navigating down to the link titled Hawthorne 2.0 where the conceptual art is shown. The site has tabs with specific information to help ensure transparency, keep residents advised of future meeting dates, explain the steps within the community development, community development department process, and be a central location to share information related to articles on the malls, the state of brick and mortar retail and development concepts. We would like the board to know that this site is still being developed and the content is being added as it is received by us. Hawthorne 2.0 has five tabs. On the top is a concept art plans tab which has information presented to date from Centennial Real Estate. There is an overview tab, and we have added content to include what is a TIF, and frequently asked questions regarding TIFs. In addition, there's information on the melanophy retail market study, store strategy analysis. This information has been sourced at the bottom of the content so people know where we are getting it from. As you can see, there's also a future meetings tab, and as our Village Manager earlier stated, Tuesday, June 15th, I'm sorry, Tuesday, June 18th at 5:30 PM at Hawthorne Center in the Carson Perry Scott Building, Centennial Real Estate and the Village will be jointly holding a town hall meeting where we have an opportunity to learn more about the proposed redevelopment of Hawthorne Center. And when we have additional information about what's going to be on the agenda, we'll post that as well. There is a development review process tab which Mike is going to discuss, and before I turn it over to him, the last tab that I want to discuss is the bulletin board tab. And as you'll see, there are many articles related to development in Vernon Hills, the status of brick and mortar, information on how malls are being perceived by millennials. And then going on down, recent articles about the redevelopment of this, this process Hawthorne 2.0, and including information about the town hall and residents getting ready to meet about this venue. I'm now going to turn it over to Mike who's going to talk about the development review process tab.
Thank you, John. In this tab, what we've done is we've outlined the different steps involved in the entitlement process. The board is aware of these steps, but it's our attempt to help anyone out in the public understand how the process works. So it covers concept presentation, technical review, public hearing, which is before the Planning and zoning commission, then coming back to the board for Committee of the Whole, and ultimately going on to a regular board meeting for final review and consideration. We're going to use this not only to help educate people to understand the different steps involved, but to also help them understand what meetings will take place, where they have an opportunity to attend, to listen and be heard. We'll be updating this page as we move forward. As everyone knows, the Hawthorne redevelopment is happening in phases. Phase one is the three lot subdivision along Milwaukee Avenue. The board has already heard the concept presentation. Village staff has performed the first technical review, and we're waiting for their responses to our comments. That's phase one. Phase two is the redevelopment of the Sears and Carsons. They've come before the board for concept presentation, and that's where it sits right now. We really don't have any additional information. We do anticipate further phasing along with the project as we move forward. And as we become aware of this information, we'll place this on the page to make, to make the information available to everyone in the community. And so, really, our attempt was to just let the board be aware of this new tab on our webpage. And if you have any comments or thoughts, me and John are, will listen.
This is live right now as we speak, right? So if I were to pull this up, this is what I, because what you're doing is live here?
Yes, sir.
Good.
Thank you.
Chief, you're next, right?
Yes, sorry, but I just wanted to point out that item C in Omnibus Agenda is authorization of payment to the northeastern Illinois Regional Crime Lab. This is probably not new, but I think it's worthwhile, new to any of the veteran trustees, but it's worthwhile to point out to the community. This is an optional membership that the village participates in to receive the highest quality level of forensic laboratory services in support of police department investigations. And this provides us entire range of the type of services that we need to solve crimes, everything from the basics of fingerprints and tool mark impressions to DNA and many other forensic samples. And we've solved crimes using all of that. I point this out because from time to time you hear some criticism in the news about backlog of DNA sex assault cases, about the extended period of time that some jurisdictions might wait for lab results to get back. And I think it's worthwhile that although we pay for an optional membership, an optional service here, it's because of that backlog. If we would have elected to only go with the state crime lab, we could be waiting many, many months for returns of our evidence instead of waiting, in many cases, only days. And at the outset, even a DNA case, the average is about 33 days, 35 days, which is really a fast turnaround. And, and in times where we really have a heater case that needs some attention, the relationship we have with the crime lab allows us to pick up the phone column and say, this is important to our community, do whatever you can, and they're Johnny on the spot. So I think it's worth, from time to time, pointing out and providing some justification to the board of why I believe it's appropriate to expend these type of funds. And with that, I'll address any questions, or just let you carry on.
There is, how many, how many cases do we send over to the crime lab a year?
I didn't bring that number, but it's, it's in the hundreds if not crossing a thousand. There are some that are more complex, but whether it's a handwriting exemplar or, most of our cases are chemistry, so drug cases where we might recover a small amount or a larger amount, but we still have to send it to the lab. But there are certainly, you know, DUI, all DUI cases go there. If we have any kind of crime of violence, if we recover body fluids from a burglary scene or a crime of violence, that all goes there. So it's in the hundreds.
Is our fee based on the expected amount of usage, or it's one, one standard fee for everyone?
No, it's a graduated fee based on the size of the community. So there's over 50 communities now. In fact, we just, I just read a report that we've added Country Club Hills and Braidwood Police Department. So we're stretching that far south now into the, into the region because people have really had some bad experiences waiting for other crime labs. Even a federal case, the feds sending evidence to the FBI crime lab can sometimes result in quite a lengthy turnaround. So we've had cases before where we work jointly with the feds, and we, we get a much faster responsive turnaround time on, on many of those cases.
And it's a local business, right?
They're, they're, they're local. That's all I'd like to say about that.
Yeah, that's, well put, Chief. Okay. Well, next is the, yeah, Omnibus Vote Agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through M?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is a second. Any comments or questions? If not, roll call.
Trustee Brown. Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaka.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, new, well, this is unfinished business. Approval and passage of resolution 2019-027, a resolution granting approval to operate outdoor special events for Melody Farm located at 849 Milwaukee Avenue. Mike Yackton, building?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can give a brief summary for you, for you all. First of all, we put an updated site plan of each of the events in front of you tonight without it be easier to read than the one that was attached to your packet. What Melody Farm is coming before you tonight is to request approval for their entire 2019 schedule of special events. There's 30 events total that they're requesting approval of. 16 of the events would be their Wellness Fair Event that would be conducted on Sunday morning between nine and 11. That's anticipated to be a low-impact event.
What does it do, outside exercising and such?
The Wellness, I'll let.
That, that's correct.
Yeah, so outside exercising, so there's going to be like a workout class from nine to nine forty-five, and then other merchants can like come and set up their own tables for experience. Yeah.
For, for all age levels?
Yeah, so the class is actually taught by Daily Method, which is in the Melody Farm Mall.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so they are sponsoring in-kind for all of the 16 classes. So it's a bar class.
All right. You want to add anything?
No, I think that pretty much summarizes it.
Did, did we get their names? Do we need your name?
My name is Elliot Adamcheck. I'm a senior property manager for Regency Centers, and I oversee operations of Melody Farm.
Okay.
I'm Victoria Jacobson. I'm with Total Event Resources, the event planning company.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. All right, go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to point out to the board that six of the events involve the sale and service of beer and wine. For these events, there would be a roped-off area that would be in the central lawn that's located generally in front of Nordstrom's Rack. Basset-trained employees from restaurants that reside in Melody Farm would do the IDing, and then there'd be a wristband for those that can drink. And then Basset-trained employees would serve the beer and wine. These events would include three Wednesday wind-down events, and then Taste of Melody Farm Happy Hour, Taste of Melody Farm Grand Opening, and Oktoberfest. The other events include four movie nights. There'd be a Dog Day Event, campfire session, a fall trick-or-treat, and then finally a holiday pop-up tree lighting event. All of these events, by the way, would be in that same Central Park. For some of the larger events, they would barricade off some parking spaces. So for tonight, if the board feels this request is appropriate, a motion approving the resolution attached to your packet is recommended with the conditions that are attached to your packet. And I would point out that one of those conditions is where the village reserves the right to require Melody Farm to hire two off-duty police officers at the village's discretion, not at Melody Farm's discretion, and they would have to pay for the cost to do that. It would be just in those instances where the police department determines that it's necessary. So with that, I can pass it over to the applicants to answer any questions that you might have.
Trustee Cook's got a question.
Well, I wanted to make, you was going to bring up what you pointed out. That was one of my questions was how we were going to control the liquor sale there and that with the roped-off area, the officers will have the discretion to tell people they cannot leave that area with the alcohol. Are you also planning on doing like wristbands and?
Exactly. So in the roped-off area that you can see, every event that has alcohol will have the roped-off area that's in your map, and there will be kind of like just a small walkway so that we can control the amount of people walking into the area and making sure that nobody's walking out with that alcohol. So as well as with wristbanding, making sure that you're 21 to enter, that's also the way that bartenders will say that you are 21 too. So both of those people will be Basset-certified, the one at the door and the one pouring the beer and wine.
And then the liquor license applications and that would all come later when we get into the.
Yeah, and what we've done is, is that it would just be restaurants that are on-site that have a current liquor license. It would be their employees that would serve the liquor. So the liquor licenses are in place, but the board would have to approve this special event request with the service of liquor.
Oh, okay. All right.
Is that what you're looking for tonight, or are you going to come one by one as the event pops up?
We, for tonight, rather than coming one by one because there's so many events, the idea was to request the board to approve all 30 events. Obviously, we'd watch this and monitor them, learn from them. We anticipate Melody Farm will come back about this time every year and request approval of their yearly schedule of events. If we become aware of issues from the previous years, we'll certainly consider that as part of the approval for the following year.
And our team is more than prepared to send you ROIs after each event if you prefer that, or any information that you need to.
Dr. Oppenheim.
So I have a few questions. First of all, regarding the liquor sales, so is each vendor going to have their own booth that they're going to work at, or is it going to be kind of like summer celebration where it's just a shared beer tent?
So we are, we are hoping that each vendor is more than interested in having their own booth. We'd like to be as, have as much merchant participation as possible. So the idea is to showcase whatever beer or wine you think that is the best for your restaurant, and that will pull people in more. So the idea is to get as many community members involved in coming to the mall so that they can experience the entirety of it.
Okay. Regarding the movie nights, who are you, what kinds of movies and who are you gearing that toward?
So movie nights will be family fun nights, kind of like that. So the movie night will start at 7:30 PM with the movie playing at 8:30, so right at sunset. It'll be on a big, large blow-up screen with cotton candy and popcorn, as well as with soft drinks and water for a very cheap sale. And those will be probably mainly kids' movies, everything either G or PG rated, and that will be blasted out on the website as well as with email blasts, and we're doing some brochures that will go around the Vernon Hills area as well. So you'll be able to know what movies are coming up and when.
So first of all, the times are listed here incorrectly at 5:00 to 8:00, I would imagine.
They did change a little bit.
A little too bright out to watch at 5:00. But, but to my greater point and bigger concern is that this is the middle of a parking lot. How are you going to keep the kids safe if it's a family-directed affair? And as many people have pointed out to me in the past, the parking is somewhat dense in there. How are you going to, to manage that with people driving around?
So most of the events are barricaded in a way that, if you can see on your maps, the strip of pavement between the lawn area, which is that green pa, or that green area.
Which page are you looking at?
I use any one.
Oh, any one of them, okay.
Movie night's the second one here. So there's nothing specific. This shows the, shows the screen and then three.
So you're talking 7:30?
But it is barricaded.
Yeah, so it would start at.
The gathering and then 8:30, movie goes on.
Okay, there's a barricade there.
So those four barricades, the listed, they did work out for last year's events. However, if, if you would like something else that's blocked off or, or more than directed, we can of course do that too.
But is there, is there a barricade through the length of where all of those parking spaces are? Is it just?
I would comment that the lawn is elevated above the parking stalls. So it is a natural barrier between parking and the area in which, you know, people would sit to view the movie.
Do you have children?
I do not.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that's not a barrier. Speaking as, as a parent and a pediatrician, that's not a barrier. So I have concerns that kids are going to jump off that into the parking lot and then, and then in through the non-barricaded aisles, which are, you know, just two-car lengths away.
We can definitely figure out a way to kind of barricade and block this off a little better, even with that rope instanchment that we would be using for the alcohol events or just more barricades down the way. We can figure a way out to just make it more, more footage between the cars and the lawn.
What if that parking area attached to the lawn, if that was all roped off from either end of that, do you think that would?
That would, yeah, that, yeah, right. I guess the third page, right? Third or fourth or, the wind-down Wednesday has it more roped off, so. But, but it's got to be more than just a rope. That's the thing. It's got to be something. Because I would certainly, if my kids were younger, I'd be concerned about bringing them into the middle of a busy parking lot on a Friday night or whatever night it is. What, what night of the week is this?
Thursdays.
On a Thursday night, which is still pretty busy at Melody Farm, too. I'd be concerned.
It's, go ahead. You got more questions, go ahead.
No, no, I was, I was just going to say, you got to do whatever you can just to make sure. That's a huge liability for, for all of us.
Absolutely. We completely understand. So are a lot of these events on a Thursday night?
It would just be the movie nights that are on Thursday nights. Yeah, most of them are on Sunday morning or Friday, Saturday.
People could go to the Memorial Arbor Theater for the concert and then go see the movie. Because the concert starts at seven, right? Does anybody know what time the concerts start that we sponsor?
I think seven o'clock.
Yeah, okay. And they're over what, by eight?
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty? Eight, eight thirty?
So then they'd be driving over there while the movie's starting.
Well, what are you going to do? Because the stores aren't closing, right? They're not closing the store.
These dates might not be the same Thursdays.
There's only four of them, right.
As, as the.
Arbor Theater.
Because the Arbor Theater is every other Thursday.
Oh, okay.
So this might be the.
Well, these look like they're staggered too.
Right. So maybe we need to have a coordination of movie night with the Arbor Theater.
We'd be happy to have.
Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Oh, well, Arbor Theater is Wednesdays and Thursdays, so.
Is it? I thought it was mostly Thursdays.
So June 27th, July.
We don't, can somebody pull up the schedule?
I'm looking at it right now.
Oh, all right.
July 11th, there's a conflict, and that's really it. It's just July 11th.
All right.
Yep, that's it, trail up, yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm sure that could be, you know, worked out. Question, do you have any music planned?
On some, most events we do.
Oh, I just didn't.
Oh, the specific movie night event, is that?
No, no. Music?
Oh, yeah. So there are a few events that do have bands or DJs. So the Taste of Melody Farm Happy Hour will have a DJ, as well as with the actual Melody Farm Grand Opening. And then the Oktoberfest will have music as well. We have a campfire session that will have acoustic guitar. And then every wind-down Wednesday, there will be a four-piece band.
Mean out in, in the plaza?
Mm-hmm, yeah, exactly, in that lawn area.
Oh, okay.
With regard to scheduling conflicts, I'd ask that you move the 9/28 date one week either direction for the campfire, because that's in direct opposition to Fall Fest.
Oh, sure.
And then, what's the? And then, what's the dates? 7/21 is a date of summer celebration. So that's a Sunday morning, so that's not a, that's not a problem.
Those dates can definitely be moved, or that specific date. You refine with the Sunday you said, correct?
I'm sorry?
You refine with the Sunday date you said?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, summer sell, an open till noon. Give or take.
Bags tournament. I don't think it starts at noon though. Okay, I, I don't have any other questions, anybody else have any?
No, so.
Is there a motion?
Michael, you're looking for a motion to approve the attached resolution, which has four unique requirements, including the police, garbage, et cetera, et cetera.
That's correct, and also including moving the campfire session date to another date other than September 28th.
And we are providing them with a blanket, kind of outdoor seating alcohol consumption license here.
The alcohol could only be located in the roped-off areas that are shown on the site plan.
Yeah, but that's an outdoor seating area that's not attached to the petitioner who will be serving the alcohol, so.
Yeah, the closest example I can give you is like the tilted kilt event, only much smaller. You know, it'll be on-site, but it won't be in the building or on an outdoor patio or anything like that.
That was their property.
Yeah, understood.
As opposed to this is common ground or?
Yeah, that was my question, should this have a separate event liquor license? I mean, we wouldn't?
Well, it'd be for obviously four mo, four months.
Well, or just the events?
Well, no, the reason I'm asking is because we don't, don't we do a special liquor license for like Rib Fest and that?
Sure.
And, and those are all licensed vendors who all have their own current licenses, but we have to do it as an on-site gathering type license.
It's, you know, if, I'll let the village attorney help me answer it. The thought was that because we have current holders of liquor licenses on that site that that would carry, it's not to say that if the board wishes that they come before the Liquor Commission and request approval of a special event liquor license for each of the event, each of the six events, if that's the board's wishes, then we can add that in as a condition to the resolution, and they'll have to come to the board. The only, the only caveat to that is, no, that'll work. Well, their first Wednesday wind is on 6/26, but if that's the board's wish, then that first wind, it just won't work.
Well, we have a meeting on the 20th. Yeah, we have a meeting on the 20th, so.
And, and that, no, there is no conflict. So that would work if the board wishes to add that on as a condition.
That would be my pleasure.
That would be my recommendation.
Yeah, you're on a?
Because technically, the license is, it currently is written for any one of those locations is at a specific geographic address.
That's what I thought.
So technically, you're now dispensing outside of that address.
Yeah, just like when somebody serves at Rib Fest and that.
Should be.
So with regard to the petitioner, you're gonna need to bring in each of the restaurateurs that's going to be the lead for that particular day's event and have them say yes.
Couldn't they just get it as a?
Well, because whose liquor license we gonna apply it against? They're, they're saying?
No, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm equating it to when we do Rib Fest, we don't?
The license should be issued?
But they have a state liquor license, the Park District does.
That's one entity that's providing the alcohol, not, not separate entities.
Right. Alcohol gets to be a problem.
We issue, well, we issue a liquor license to the village too for, for Fall Fest and for Summer Sell as well.
But again, that's one entity, us. Here, it's, it could be whoever. Invicto, it could be Lazy Dog. Well, no, couldn't be, well, yeah, Whole Foods has a pour because they have the, the wine bar, yes.
So could the mall of Melody Farm hold the liquor license, just as the village would in that Rib Fest case?
That would be something that would need to be explored.
You could, the issue at this point, given June 20th, is whether you can get a state license in time. But there should be an individual entity that is running the event.
That event.
Would they have one of the individual, like Trustee Schultz was recommending, a lead vendor or something?
Lazy Dog, you have this date. Invicto, you have this date. Next Door, you have this date. Whole Foods, you have this date, and they're responsible.
They can do that, still getting a temporary license, that shouldn't be a problem. But then at least you have somebody who has a master license. Would also be potentially an opportunity for one of those people to showcase their own brand of drinks, et cetera. If you wanted to do a margarita night for Invicto and, you know, a craft beer night with Lazy Dog or what have you.
So i, if we were to do that, my understanding is that only one merchant would be able to, to, to pour alcohol for sale at this?
If we do it that way, or?
If you do it that way.
Or they, they were originally hoping that there'd be lots of vendors at the same event. Certain margaritas, as well as beer, as well as wine, as well as?
Yeah, because, because the thing is, is when the Park District does their beer tasting, they have multiple vendors, but they're all coming in under the umbrella of the Park District's.
You don't have an umbrella.
Could other, could other vendors come in under?
One?
One vendor's umbrella and sell?
I, as a private entity, I wouldn't want liability.
That creates all sorts of other issues.
Right.
Yeah.
So in other words, the best thing is for them to get a?
For Melody Farm to apply for a liquor license.
And that would be through the state, correct?
And local.
Well, you gotta come before us, yeah. And then, but you can get the ball, maybe they can get the ball rolling with the state as soon as possible.
If they couldn't do that quick enough, then they could have the individual vendors for the first event come in and apply for a particular one for the first one or the first two until you acquire a license of your own as a blanket one.
So are we gonna, would the board wish that we add that condition into the resolution? That they, and they will come back to the Liquor Commission, Melody Farm, to get their special event, to get their liquor license for all the special events? And, and that'll also include them getting a state license once they get our license.
Well, I, you know, go, go ahead.
Yeah, for tonight, it's, alright, let's approve 2019-027, but strike anything that deals with the sale or distribution of alcohol.
Why don't you, my recommendation would be included, but make it subject to them getting the appropriate licensure. If you give me a call tomorrow, I can help you through.
So, well, yeah, thank you, that way we don't have to come back again for the outdoor special event approval.
Well, here, I'm gonna, now I'm gonna throw a fly in the ointment here. If, if, you know, you have a dram shop, it's liquor liability, okay? And what that covers is up to, on an individual basis, about, goes to $78,000. That, you know, I mean, it's capped at that. The reason everybody's got these million-dollar policies is if maybe the tour bus and everybody was shined up on it goes over, now everybody wants the $78,000 because, I don't know, the, they were pouring booze on the bus and they owned the bus or something. You know, but in any event, the other thing I'd be concerned about, you know, with all these different restaurants and such, you, you should make sure that maybe they, they, you don't want them to have an exclusion in their policy that only ensures their designated premises, which means the building and probably the ways and means adjourning, so. You know, you may wanna get certi, I get certificates of insurance off all these people right now. No, 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 no. But you gotta look for what I just said, because it will say that. It'll say premises only on there. So if it doesn't say that, then they're, you know, if they do something stupid, you know, with one of their servers punching somebody and it isn't a dram shop, you know, that, that, the liability will inure to that employee of, let's say, Kuma's Corner, okay? I'm just, you know, so, yeah, I mean?
What if it doesn't? I mean, what, I mean, what if it is specifically stated as in this designated area, then what do they do about it?
Designated premises means right in the building.
So then they would have to go back to their insurer and adjust and modify, get an amendment to the policy?
Or not participate.
Or not participate until they can get that.
I mean, because they could be bear in the event of a lawsuit.
In the event of a problem because they served outside as opposed to inside their premises.
And people aren't that litigious in this world. Yeah, okay, well, you understand what I'm talk?
I do, I do.
You got somebody at Regency that's, you know, the risk manager guru?
We absolutely do, yes.
Yeah, we'll run that by him or her, I don't care. What about you? What kind of coverage you got? Seriously?
Our, we have indemnifications too. The other thing that we were thinking of doing for Regency Centers is before these people get the wristbands, signing a waiver that also identifies Melody Farm and total event resources, as well as with all of the merchants participating, so?
Wait, wait, so you're gonna run the event, right?
Yes.
Okay, and you're gonna designate them as an additional insured?
Mm-hmm.
You want, okay. You know what an additional named insured is?
I'm sorry?
You know what an additional named insured is?
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
You know, okay, tell me what you think it means.
Are you saying that it's both undershirt, unshared?
No, well, it, it is an additional insured?
The form, there's a little box, and if their name isn't in there, then they ain't covered.
Well, wait, I, no, I'm going one step further. Additional named insured means Melody Farms would have the same status as, as your company. They would be like, you know, like a mortgagee, you know? So it goes one step further. Run that by your risk manager too, will you?
Thank you, President.
And you should probably look at getting your own dram policy.
Yeah, a dram policy's nothing but, you know, but the liability you gotta have.
Because your CGL won't cover you for dispensing liquor or any injuries that result therefrom.
The only coverage you would have for liquors if it's host liquor liability and you're just giving it away.
What, what does the dram acronym stand for?
Dram shop? I mean, it's probably D-R-A-M for something, but?
I know.
That's if you overs?
That's the question, what's the sum?
No, no, if you're, if you're the place that the guy, guy or woman had the last drink at and you go out and, you know, kill somebody, you know, the cause of action by the, you know, the, the third party, they get about $78,000 from?
Somebody's blinking.
The dram, from the bar owner, okay? Of course, they're gonna sue you for a lot of stuff.
A lot more, yeah.
There'll be a lot more allegations in the complaint besides dram.
I don't believe it's an acronym.
It's not an acronym?
No.
Okay.
It's a word straight out of the statute. A dram shop is another word for a tavern bar.
Oh, in olden days, man.
Yeah, dram was a unit of measure for alcohol.
Yeah, it's a measurement, right.
Just a wee dram.
Yeah.
Not, not in the dram.
No, no, seriously, dram was a unit of measure for alcohol.
Not a pint shop or a pint shop.
And then what are we gonna do about edibles and squeezing stuff into water and drinking it and then smoking it? You know, like pot?
No, we did this about.
Yeah, okay.
That's a later event, for sure.
Can't buy it here.
Will be coming pretty quick.
January 1st, okay.
When's it, oh, January 1st?
Not allowed in public.
Oh, okay.
Not in public places.
Okay.
Completely prohibited in public places or automobiles.
Okay, even walking down the street?
Prohibited.
Prohibited.
Commissioner Atkinson there is the Scrivener, and he has the points well noted.
So, yeah, my, well, it's the conditions that are outlined in your packet, including, and then we'll add conditions that they're gonna provide an adequate barrier for all the events, in particular movie nights when kids are present, between the parking lot and where the kids will be seating, the movie area itself. Something better than just a barricade, so we'll work with you on that.
At the discretion of the building commissioner?
Yes, thank you, and we'll work with you on that. Also, that the campfire session be moved to an alternate date from September 28th. And finally, that for, finally, for any event that's serving beer and wine, that you need to approach the village's Liquor and Licensing Commission for approval of a special event for each of those events. And we can, if you can move fast enough, we can get you on the June 20th agenda, so.
I'm pretty speedy.
Thank you.
And, and the key, do you think you're done?
Well, now, now that, now the commissioner has stated all that, so move.
Second.
So, this is for a vote. Motion, second. Okay, under comments and questions, the campfire, is that one night or something?
Yes.
Okay, and is that all propane and stuff like that, or?
Nope, the only actual fire is going to be in the fire that's already built into Melody Farm. And then this is kind of an event where there's going to be like little tents set up with books inside that kids can read and then acoustic guitar again, a hot chocolate station, as well as with smores.
So the, the, it's, what is it, natural gas that you use?
Yes, that's correct.
And that's all, and that, the three pits.
It's enclosed in a case as well.
I was gonna say, because it was propane, you gotta be careful of ethylene oxide. You been following that case?
I have not.
Steri, what is it, stereogenic?
Oh.
Yeah, I was just reading about that, and they say, you know, barbecuing with a lot of propane? You know, even your lawnmower throws this crap off. But we're not worried about that, it's not a big fire. Alright.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Yeah, roll call.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Brown? Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye. Okay, let's party.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
You got your homework.
Okay. New business?
Yeah.
Old business?
It's, it's, once again, my desire to jump on the bully pulpit. However, I do have something that I'd like to make people aware of that died during the legislative session, and that was Senate Bill 1966, the Floyd overhaul sponsored by Representative Kathleen Willis. We had another mass shooting, 150 so far this year. And a mass shooting is as, those defined as where there are four more casualties. SB 1966 provided for an increase in the fee, a reduction in the, the time window that one would have, one of these, which I have.
But him.
Would take it from 10 years to five years, and it would also require a fingerprint. And then some people are calling it the Aurora Law, because if it was in place, there would have probably been a better chance that the individual who killed the four people, I believe it was in Aurora, we even lose track now of how many people are dying in each event. But that he would have been, had his guns taken away from him because his Floyd card would no longer have been valid. This is just one more sad event in our history. But with that being said, I urge everyone to write their state senator and state representative, to get on board, potentially during the veto session, to tell their legislator to at minimum support SB 1966.
Well, we could do, you know, maybe we should go beyond it if everybody's comfortable with it and just send a, you know, like a letter to our state reps or even pass a resolution.
I'd be quite, quite happy to make a motion to that end.
Well, you know, I'm sure we could do that, right? Well, let's, if everybody's comfortable with it, let's do it then, you know? Go on record and, and, you know, press should pick up on it, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, could we, could we have it for the next meeting so we can actually read the?
Yeah.
Yeah. We could read it on, on the 18th, but that one we're just?
No, on the 20th, 18th is?
I know, it's a special meeting, but, you know?
You can certainly read it then, but it won't?
Yeah, yeah, that's okay.
Won't have anything to do with that.
Yeah. Alright, okay, that's, that's, any other new business to come before the board? The only thing I gotta say with Dave or whoever else, you know, like the Park District and whoever else has property that people walk, run, or ride their bikes on now? It probably involves a couple of the business parks, just to trim their bushes and stuff back. Because with all this rain, it's like, you know, it's like, you, you? Yeah, it's, I mean, I don't know the enforceability of that, but we can do our part, the Park District can do their part. And then, of course, all the business parks, I mean, Christ, it's continental executive. parks, I mean, Christ, it's Continental Executive Park, they're spending, you know, at least, I thought at one time, for every acre of land you owned, you were spending over fifteen hundred bucks a year or something like that to contribute, or maybe even more than that, you know, because they all have landscaping services, because we, you know, we kinda put, put every, had everybody put all the foliage, you know? So, how should we go about that? Dave, you seem to be-
So, we will go around and look at all of our public paths and we'll make sure that they're trimmed. We're pruning this week, next week, the following weeks, so we'll get after that. We'll reach out to the different business owners with my guidance and assistance, and we'll work with the Park District to get that done.
Yeah, you know, yeah, it's pretty, they, they all have more, maybe one or two different landscaping companies in the, you know, the two business parks, and there's, of course, of course, we got the Vavilson, they don't have any paths, so there's nothing to, they don't believe in them, but certainly Continental Executive Park does.
Since you brought up lawn mowing, can we, uh-
Lawn mowing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Since you brought that up, can we just review what, what our policy is, the ordinance in terms of the times?
Oh, time, time.
Because that's, yeah, that, that question came to us, and actually, it came to me separately from, from a different, yeah, from a different-
We're, yeah, all the lawn grass throughout the village, are you talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's sixteen?
The time of day.
The time of day.
Mr. Cohen, I end up having a comment in regards on the Saturday.
Mark answered it, so.
Right.
Thank you.
But just for the public awareness.
They are allowed to begin cutting the grass at seven AM, not after nine AM.
Until, until nine PM. With the exceptions of, of the, the golf course.
Excepting the two golf courses, I think, and that's the only exceptions. So, any, you cannot use any lawn mowing equipment between nine PM and before seven AM.
Well, what about weekends?
There's no exception in the ordinance for weekends.
Yeah, and we, do we wanna look at maybe changing that, because I had a couple things to talk about.
Well, the construction you can't start on a Saturday until, what, eight or nine o'clock?
Uh, nine.
Nine. You know what I mean, so?
Right, but it also, the ordinance also states that if it's the individual homeowner doing their own construction on their own property, then the time doesn't apply.
Really?
But weekends, seven AM is a little early.
Yeah, you wanna listen to some guy building a deck at seven o'clock in the morning, and you got your windows open on a Saturday or Sunday?
If it's fresh cedar and it smells good.
What's that?
Fresh cedar.
Okay, let's not split hairs here, you know?
Close the window.
So, when do the, when do the exception for the golf courses come into play, and why, why?
Takes so long to mow.
My guess is-
And because they wanna get it done before-
I understand they want it, yeah, when, when does tee time start?
Of course, because you can't play on the course while they're cutting the grass, is my guess, but it's been, it's been in existence since I've been here.
They do them early, so you can get out.
And, and we haven't had any complaints about that, but-
How long, how long does it take for someone to get through the first, first round? I mean, maybe they can-
But tee times start at six AM.
Right.
And they start mowing typically at four AM, because they need to mow the greens in advance of the folks coming onto the course at six AM. Typically, they'll be just doing the greens at that point in time, and then they'll start on the fairways and rough and tee boxes later.
Is this someone who lives near the golf course that is filed?
No, this complaint, I think, was strictly about residential. We've never had a complaint about the golf course.
Well, right. You live near a golf course, that's sort of like, no, sort of like your house getting hit by a golf-
The same day that we received the, that question from the, from the person in question, I, I had received a separate question from someone else who specific, who lives on the golf course and was questioning about that.
So, it's his neighbor that's cutting his lawn too early, is that?
No, well-
That was the original.
The original one, the one I'm talking about, it was, it was-
Golf course?
It was the golf course, it was White Deer Run, so they were wondering, you know, what-
I don't think we can-
I think it was at five AM or something like that, so I didn't-
It's a hazard of living on a golf course.
It is a hazard of living on a golf course, but maybe-
Sort of like your house getting hit, you can't prevent that from happening, especially when Schultz is out there.
But we might wanna look at, we might wanna look at-
No, no, big duck, big old duck hook.
Now, in, in this case, with this individual, I, I suggested that if he had an issue, if there was something that's occurring with his neighbor, maybe he could stop by and ask his neighbor if he wouldn't mind.
For the neighbor, but for the-
For the neighbor, right.
The golf course, you can't do it.
But for the golf course, I mean, is there a way that we could state it so it's gotta be on, couldn't they do it on a Thursday or something and just start later, or just-
No, they cut them every day.
So, seven days a week.
Yeah.
The maintenance issue.
This is a lawn.
Play golf, that course is kept in great shape.
What kind of doctor are you?
And you have to get out that early, otherwise, all you do is hold up all the players, because they, they have to wait while the grounds crew-
No, well, that's why I was asking, I mean, if they start at, at the first tee, I mean, I don't know how long it takes them to get, to get through, but it takes golfers a while to get through, so.
Takes longer to mow a hole or a green than it does for the group of play, a foursome to play that hole.
Right.
For a rip, yeah.
And they really, they don't do it every day.
Every day.
Every day.
Yeah, every day.
You don't see the grass grow long on the golf course.
Yeah, some days they may cut off, some days they may be cutting fairways.
Okay.
But the maintenance, the head of maintenance over at White Deer Run told me they need to cut the greens three to four times a week, so that's basically every other day.
And, and the days that they don't-
The greens, three to four, the days they're not doing the greens, they're doing the fairway.
No, no, and the days they're not cutting the greens, they're rolling them. That's also a powered machine, so every day, a green gets worked.
Then they got machines that rake the sand traps, too, and those are motorized.
Right.
Yeah, there's nothing.
Again, as Trustee Takaoka said, it's the hazard-
Yeah, there's nothing.
The joy and the hazard.
Well, you know, and, and to the golfer, the golfer appreciates the fact that he's not hitting every shot out of six inches of rough, because it isn't the US Open you're playing, you know, I mean, and, and the greens, people like them to be relatively quick, and you say, you gotta, you gotta keep them at a certain height. You know, you know what the stimp meter is?
No clue.
It measures the, the fastest of the greens.
It's like a little, like, in DRAM, something like that.
I proudly do not know what that means.
But in any event, yeah, it, it, you know, let's face it, golf courses are pretty delicate places to keep in good shape, you know, it's, it's tough, you know?
All right, thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a closed session meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, after this.
There will be a closed session after the committee of the hall to discuss personnel.
We will not come back.
No. Okay, there's a motion and a second, roll call.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Brown. President Byrne.
Aye. Okay, like to call the committee of the hall meeting to order. First item is approval of the minutes. What do they do?
Who are the minutes? May twenty-first.
Yeah, I don't want too many pieces of paper.
Motion to approve the committee of the hall meeting minutes of May twenty-first, twenty nineteen.
Second it.
Oh, yeah, there we go. All right, motion and second, comments, questions, deletions, corrections, if none, roll call.
Trustee Brown. Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Abstain.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
President Byrne.
I think I got abstain, I wasn't here when, it was, yeah, I abstain. Motion carries.
Might I suggest that we move three and four up, get those out of the way, so that the Lake Charles feasibility study is our final event?
Well, who's here on, on one twenty-eight? Anybody here from, from one twenty-eight?
There's no one here from one twenty-eight or, or District Seventy-three, which is the next item on the agenda.
Well, you, you know, in all honesty, I'm hearing straightforward here, but, you know, it's kinda like with District one twenty-eight, you know, probably, we could take the nineteen thousand and maybe use it to spray some ponds in town. It's not like they can't afford this one, you know, with an eighty, when they, eighty million dollar surplus.
Yeah.
You know, Hawthorne on the other end, yeah, they'll just, but, I mean, we could take the, seriously, I'm sure-
Well, that's a good, that's a good point.
I am.
Oh, okay.
You're thinking with the, the order that-
All right. All righty, okay, well, what is there, what's the last one?
More controversial than I thought.
One, two, three, okay, Lake Charles feasibility study. Who's here for that? Any Burke people?
They'll be, they'll be coming up, so-
Are these the Burke people?
These are, this is Darren Olson and Jed Anderson from Burke Engineering, as they're setting up the PowerPoint presentation. Did you have a question?
For who?
Why do you know if you-
I could, you know, we could have a chat if you want, I mean, when are you going up north again?
So, so, as they're setting up the computer, I just wanted to say, in terms of, as the village was developing, one of the things that I think we've done a very good job as a village is to create a green belt. So, from the golf course moving northerly, the green belt from Deer Path going up into Greg's Landing, we understand what a great resource we have with our lake and, and stream systems, so we work with the Park District, ourselves, and landowners to make sure it's maintained, we work with the Health Department to have them do different studies of the lakes. Last year, in terms of the budget, it was added to have Burke Engineering review Lake Charles, because we understand that things are changing in the lake, there's algae-related issues, sedimentation, et cetera, so we wanted to better understand the lake, so that's why we, we hired Burke Engineering. I've done a brief presentation before, so I'll take a step back and allow Darren and Jeb to give an update on their findings.
You, you guys gotta introduce yourselves for the record.
So, I am Darren Olson with Christopher Burke Engineering, I am an assistant department head in the Water Resources Department.
I'm Jed Anderson, I've been with Burke for thirty years, I'm head of the Environmental Resources Department.
Are you guys working on Foxconn?
Yes, Darren and I.
Yeah, I've been to a few meetings as an alternate. Okay. Hey, how's that going, by the way?
Well, we had a presentation in, was it April, May, I believe, and then we're continuing on with the study.
Are they, are they building up there right now?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Lot of building going up there.
This is obviously the large, large, large development, is that actually true, is that Racine, or, no, it's Kenosha, right?
Oh, Pleasant Prairie.
Mount Pleasant.
Pleasant Prairie?
Uh, Mount Pleasant.
Mount Pleasant.
It's near there.
Okay.
Near Violet, right down, Mayberry.
Head up north on I ninety-four and look for the construction and you found it.
Yeah, 'cause that's gonna impact the Displanes River and Fox River?
Nope, just the Displanes.
Oh, okay.
Is that office building going up right now, that's, the skeleton's up, is that Foxconn?
I believe it, I haven't been up there since, on site since January, but I believe that's the case, yeah.
Yeah, well, I was there five hours ago, so.
So, you have a better idea than I-
I thought that was it, it's down the road from Uline.
Yep, yep.
Okay, go ahead.
So, we are, are here to talk about Lake Charles, and we'll start with a little bit of background on Lake Charles. It, you see the photo on the left is a twenty seventeen aerial photo, the surface area for Lake Charles is approximately thirty-seven acres, so it's a fairly large lake with one point two miles of shoreline, so again, very sizable lake with two hundred and fourteen acre feet of storage below the normal water level. Now, acre feet is a term that engineers use to describe a volume of water, you can imagine an acre of land, a foot deep, that is one acre foot of water, so the amount of water below the normal water level of Lake Charles is two hundred and fourteen acre feet, so a lot of water below that normal water level. The average depth is just over three and a half feet, and the maximum depth is seven feet. And I'll direct your attention to the exhibit on the right, now that's from the Lake County Health Department, and that's what's called a bathymetric survey, so you can see it's aligned the same way as the aerial photo, north is looking up, and that is, that's showing how deep the lake is, so you could see that, that contour in the center, and as we get deeper, it's darker blue, that contour in the center is, is the area that's approximately seven feet deep, so that's towards the, towards the south side of, of the lake near the outlet.
Is there any way to tell how deep that was back when it was being mined?
We really can, you know, this is actually one of the only surveys we have of, of how deep Lake Charles was, it was created, so it's like you hit the nail on the head, it's a man-made lake, it was created a very long time ago, prior to nineteen thirty-nine, we went back and looked at all the aerial photos, so it's very difficult to, to transport back in time and determine how deep it was.
Yeah.
But we know that as development is occurring, it's, it's filling in, and we'll get to that in, in a few slides. The, the current outlet structure for Lake Charles is a dam that's on the south side, and that dam was, about twenty years ago, was rehabbed as part of the Greg's Landing development, and right now, Lake Charles is currently used for irrigation water, for stormwater management, it's a permitted stormwater management facility, it has several permits through the village, Lake County SMC, and IDNR, and it's also used for recreation, which I didn't include on that list, but certainly, recreation is one of the key aspects of it. One of the, another interesting thing of Lake Charles is where's the water coming from, and it's, Lake Charles is an online lake, so there is a waterway called Seavee Ditch, which, if you look at the aerial photo there, Seavee Ditch drains an area approximately five point six square miles, so that is a lot of land and a highly urbanized land that all that rain runs over those impervious surfaces, collects all that water, and drains towards the east and then the south into Lake Charles. One of the things that we found is we walked this, we walked the whole length of Seavee Ditch, and found that there is not much channel maintenance occurring, the village of Vernon Hills did a section of channel maintenance, but other than that, through Mundeline and through the unincorporated areas, there's not a lot of channel maintenance that's occurring. There's also fairly high stream velocities, this was an excavated ditch, so this is not a natural ditch that has the typical meanders that slow the velocity of water, this was a channelized ditch, so you have very high velocities, you know, that combined with the lack of maintenance leads to some problems with downstream lakes, and Lake Charles essentially becomes, you can imagine all the sediment washing off the land, all the sediment from the scour, Lake Charles, if you look at that schematic or the aerial photo up there, it Lake Charles, if you look at that schematic or the aerial photo up there, it is the first online lake. So, all of the sediment, all the pollutants, the first place that they have room to slow down, kind of like a bathtub, bathtub, slow down and settle, is Lake Charles. And so, there's a lot that goes on with that, and one of the things that we saw and what one that we're looking at is there's some challenges upstream, but there's also a lot of room for improvement upstream as well. And I'll transition here to Jed, but, you know, Jed drew the short straw in our study, and he actually walked the whole section of Seavee Ditch. And so, this is one of the photos, and I'll turn over to him, and he can talk a little bit more about what's going on in the waterway and also in the lake.
Okay, so, I started to put a bunch of photos in of a lot of sections of the stream channel since we walked it all, but this photo really was typical. So, you've got 5.4 square miles of runoff coming through Seavee Ditch. This picture is hard to read in the red, but that's about a four-foot cut bank. That's a pretty typical view. If you walk all the way up to the point in Mundeline where it starts, you're going to find lots of sections and lots of thousands of feet of shoreline that's highly eroded. And so, it's a leading cause of degradation in Lake Charles. So, then, this degradation causes a number of impairments, and those impairments are, we've got all this, and you can see in this photo, the yellow would be the water line when there is no aquatic vegetation growing there. Now, we've got this shallow water depths, we've got a lot of aquatic vegetation, we've got a lot of accumulation of organic and mineral sediments. We also have other contributing factors of, there's a huge Canada goose population out there. They have a lot of feces, they create a lot of nutrient loading to the lake itself. We have all the inflow of all the leaves and grass clippings and leaf litter, sticks, twigs, and the mineral sediments, all depositing in Lake Charles. And these things are all resulting in late uterification.
German shorthairs.
Beautiful dogs.
They herd geese real well. Remember, we had it on the nine hole?
Motorboats.
Yeah, motorboats, yeah, yeah. Anyway, yeah, I know, there's a lot of geese up.
I did the original wetland delineation at Craig's Landing when that development was started, so I was out there many years ago, and there were probably four or 5,000 geese in the soybean field the day I was out walking around. It was unbelievable. They all took off at once, came right over my head, and I was dodging a lot of bombs.
Yeah.
So, the lake is uterifying, right? It's converting to wetland, and you're seeing that in this photo that's up on the screen here. The problem is, when you've got the, this deposit of all this organic leaf litter and all these organic sediments, it causes an oxygen debt. The oxygen debt slows down the decay of this material, so then it's like this self-fulfilling prophecy, it's worsening, right? The more organic sediment, the worse the oxygen levels, the faster it's accumulating and creating this organic sludge on the bottom. So, this just cycle just worsens without the ability to have enough bacteria in there to decompose all this material. So, we're going to talk about some of the options for restoration. So, I want you to skip one. Could you?
I just had one quick question from your previous. The inflow, does it strictly come from the west over there, Mundeline, or does any of it come down, does the Seavee Ditch have any relationship to St. Mary's Lake up to the north there?
It does not. There is some, it's mainly Mundeline, there's a little bit of unincorporated areas, and then it is a little bit of Libertyville drains through Charles Brown Detention Basin and enters.
But it comes more from the west than it does the northwest?
That's correct.
Speaking of Charles Brown, though, what are they doing there? Are they doing a good-sized pond in that park?
Actually, Darren is helping.
Darren and I are working on that.
So, you're going to make sure nothing flows into the Seavee and Lake Charles?
Yes, they're improving, they're improving Charles Brown Park, that facility, they're improving it immensely to actually trap more sediment there rather than releasing it downstream.
So, we're dredging quite a bit of material out of that lake and creating.
Is this all part of that $48 million eventual assessment?
It is actually not. The, the Charles Brown Detention Basin improvements are separate from the village's stormwater master plan.
So, you don't think this is going to drastically affect our lake? There's going to be water flowing, right?
It's going to help it.
Okay.
Yep, it'll help it.
We got to make sure we record that and then send it to them and have them sign it so Chris's insurance can cover us in the event it doesn't. Oh, boy, okay.
All right, so, I skipped this slide a second ago. So, obviously, with this degradation of, we're having difficulty controlling it. It's a sink for nutrients, we've got excess of mineral and organic sediments, we've got poor oxygenation, we've got the golf course and residential neighborhoods that are all tributary to Seavee Ditch that are contributing fertilizer, which really can't be controlled effectively. And then we have the shallow warmer water that exacerbates the growth of, and rate of the algae and the wetland vegetation that's growing in there. So, one of the controls also would be to dredge and increase the water depth and move the buildup. So, some of the options, I mean, I kind of go out of order here, so dredging is an option, but I want to stress that we don't recommend dredging until we resolve the issues with Seavee Ditch. We don't want to dredge Lake Charles and just have Seavee Ditch dumping all this sediment load into the lake. So, dredging is an option, it is not an option that you want to pursue until Seavee Ditch is restored. So, what are the other things we can do? We can continue to do vegetation management. Out there right now, there's a contract for, I'm not sure where Sherman is, Dave?
Clark.
Clark, and Clark is treating the lake, trying to treat the vegetation, trying to get it back so it's not so unsightly to the residents. We want to recommend that you hire a company to do the goose harassment, add a legs if you have to, to get them off the site and to stop residing in the lake and hatching their goslings at the lake.
The German shorthair.
Yeah, that's where the German shorthairs come in.
Any dog that doesn't mind being bit by a goose would be a good goose harassment dog, because they can be ruined very quickly if they are fearful of the geese.
Dogs jump into the shallow part of the lake.
They'll chase them, they'll, yeah, a good dog will chase them, they'll swim after them. Ideally, they're going to leave the site, stay off the site. But if, there are dogs that will get bit, and they will not like it, and they'll just be fearful of geese, so you have to kind of watch that. We're getting way off track. We strongly.
Obviously.
We strongly recommend installing aeration in the park, in the lake. The, it's an aerator that goes on the bottom of the lake, it creates a huge bubble column, and it circulates the water, it oxygenates the water, it increases significantly the amount of aerobic bacteria, which decompose the material something like 10 times faster than the anaerobic. So, instead of having organic sludge accumulating on the bottom of the pond, now you're actually decomposing it, and the byproduct of that bacterial action is really a gas, and so you're helping vent that gas with the aeration to the surface and getting out of the water column. That way, the algae's not being able to use it, and other aquatic vegetation's not being able to use those nutrients because they're being vented. So, we're strongly recommending it. We worked with a company called Vertex, they created this drawing for us, they provided a proposal to us, which we provided in part of our report, with the cost to purchase that device. It's about $30,000 installed, there's going to be some installation costs, but it's not a, it's a huge cost.
And if I could comment right now, Dave and I had this conversation before the meeting started. The municipal golf course here has a holding pond that is used, just like Lake Charles is used for irrigation purposes. Same setup, we've got a well there, and we pump into that pond to make sure that we have a sufficient amount of water. At the beginning of this season, so in the April timeframe, it still wasn't warm out, it was still very, very miserable out, but the algae bloom was immense for, I couldn't believe it that quickly, that early. And Dave's folks put in two aerators, now they're surface aerators, so they're probably not as good as these, but what I saw there was miraculous. There is zero algae on the surface of that pond right now. They really do work, so that $30,000 seems like a no-brain, no-brainer.
Believe it or not, it's not that hard for the man.
Yeah.
Because I do all their best.
Yeah, you got maintenance and you got electric.
Yeah, there is electric out there right now at the golf club.
Is any part of this, you know, Lake Charles not ours? Is that, is it all ours?
It is all ours.
Park District's got nothing.
The water body itself is the village's.
Yeah.
Okay, so, if we get to a point where we do have Seavee Ditch restored and we want to go into dredging, there's going to be two ways to dispose this material. Either going to do it as onsite, onsite or offsite disposal. Ideally, it'd be onsite because of IEPA rules in terms of ownership and contamination of soils, offsite disposal is very expensive. So, if there is onsite disposal, it'd be done in an upland, non-floodplain site and non-wetland site. If it was offsite, it would normally go to a sanitary waste landfill. There's about an $80 per cubic yard premium to dispose of into a sanitary landfill.
And if I can, again, make another comment regarding that process, we did that at the municipal golf course, I want to say between 16 and 18 years ago. Do you remember how much we dredged and what the cost was? We did retain the soils on-site, used them to create moguls, berms, whatever, along one of the holes that was near at hand, but I thought it still was a relatively expensive project.
If that was the project that involved the removal of the dam also? Um, if it was in concert with that, there's a couple of different efforts. One was fixing the sand traps and losing the material, and then another one was removing the dam and then creating a flatter.
Right.
Riparian shoreline and then replanting it.
Yeah, do you remember?
It, you know, it's been a few years.
Yeah.
You're talking about, yeah, there was a lot of fill, wasn't it put around the seventh, seventh green and all that?
Yeah, and along the.
The KSP used to live?
On the eighth hole there. That's all those moguls there, and it took forever to dry out.
Yeah.
In fact, we had one parent that was threatening to sue us because of, it was muck, and the kids were going in there chasing golf balls, and the kid lost his shoes. We got the kid out, but the parent wanted us to reimburse for the shoes.
I think it included a pair of pants, too.
So, anyway, that was, I don't think we did that, but again, that was.
Yeah, that's.
Very viable because it created then enough volume there to support ongoing irrigation, but even then, ongoing sediment buildup, that's why we had to install the well to kind of maintain the level, because there'd be too big an ebb and flow.
We installed the well because of droughts.
Right, right. So, we did have this, the dredging, and it was, we emptied the lake, so they went in there with a humongous front-end loader and scooped and, but again, it was on-site, and it was, was very expensive.
Yeah, it is expensive, so.
And they had a little pond, is what, is it even an acre?
Um, maybe, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, when we talk about dredging costs, I'm going to go a little bit out of order. So, if you were to do the whole lake and take it back to roughly 25% of it being 10 feet deep, which would be what IDNR would say you want to do for fisheries, you're looking at a cost of $11.2 million. We're not suggesting that, we're suggesting taking a more strategic approach, focusing on those areas where you get the biggest bang for your buck, where you can re, you can react, you can access it again in the future if you want to redredge and collect that sediment. So, if you were, for example, to take out the sediment delta, so in the left photo, you'll see that yellow, the southern yellow area is the sediment delta that's formed. Taking that out, we estimate it costs about $1.2 million. Other options would be to put in sediment traps, and the sediment traps would be the, on the left photo, the north yellow area would be one area at the north in the lake. And if you look up, I can't point to you, but up in the upper left-hand corner, you'll see a yellow square, I can't remember the name of that road.
Mm-hmm.
That would be another spot where a sediment trap could be constructed. So, those traps would, would cost about $390,000 to construct.
Each?
Total, for the two. And then, on the right photo, there's two inflow swales that come into the lake, and they both have erosion associated with them, and we estimated it costs about $400,000, or $330,000, excuse me, to restore those two drainage waves. Again, the biggest cause for degradation right now is Seavee Ditch itself. Let's talk about the riparian corridor first, so again, a little bit out of order. Much of the corridor is vegetated by buckthorn. Buckthorn is a really nasty, non-native veget, shrub species, that's what they call aleopathic. It prevents other plants from growing underneath it, including ground cover. So, usually, when you go into a buckthorn thicket, you're going to find that there's virtually no leaf litter, no grass, no anything, it's bare soil. It produces a lot of nitrogen that actually supercharges earthworms, if you can believe that, and those earthworms eat everything. So, you end up with no leaf litter, no ground cover, no anything, and bare soil, so it's highly erodible. So, you've got Seavee Ditch, which is, has a significant amount of buckthorn growth, we're suggesting, when we say riparian corridor restoration is removing all that buckthorn and replanting with native vegetation, native herbaceous ground-covered vegetation. Restoring the channel itself and its erosion, we would suggest doing it in phases because we're looking at a total cost of roughly $5.2 million. I was suggesting that this would be done in conjunction with Mundeline and a bunch of different grants to try to fund that.
Dance the sphere.
Yes.
Well, now, the states flush, we should be able to get some money out of that.
So, there are grants.
Are there federal?
Grants from Lake County and from IEPA Section 319 grants as well. The combined funding could be more than 60% by other entities with using those agencies. Finally, there's a few isolated locations. On the east side of Butterfield Road, there's a big scour hole that's formed at the downstream end of that corridor, we're suggesting to repair that scour hole because that's a source of sediment as well. The cost to restore that's about $60,000.
How do you prevent that from recurring?
Pardon?
How do you prevent the scour hole from? You'd armor it with riprap. We'd probably, you know, fill it in and then put riprap around there so that's, and we'd size it to make sure that, based on the velocity of the stream, that that rock is going to stick.
This is going to be a big rock, you know, 18-inch or bigger stone, which we chink, fill in with smaller rock to hold it in place. But we're going to, like Darren said, we're going to look at the depth and velocity of the flow, which will, using a normal graph, we'll figure out what the size riprap we'd use.
This, Dave, did we do that along part of the Seavee that runs under Deer Pass? In other words, you're at the firehouse or wherever?
Right.
You know, the Seavee that runs, is that, is that even, no, is it, it's not the Seavee, is it?
Atrium, the atrium ditch that goes into Firethorn Lake and then the outfall of Firethorn Lake into the Seavee, there is a little bit of riprap at the exit point, at the outfall.
Where does that start? It's not very long, right?
It's not very long at all.
Is that, does this?
Are you wondering about where the headwaters of the atrium ditch is?
Well, is it, is it over by the?
It would be, it would be 60 and Butterfield Road is the headwaters for the atrium, yeah.
Yeah, because that, that really gets flowing.
It does, yeah.
That's the one that runs through Lake Tumachagua, right?
It absolutely does, it does.
They could dump some water into the ditch. But what do we use, did we put stone in there or something?
We did.
But Matt, how many?
Uh, we used 18-inch, 18-inch rocks.
But does it run all the way back towards the park?
Uh, not in its entirety, a little bit less than that.
So, wrapping up, you know, I think one of the things to hit on here is this idea of taking a watershed approach, especially when looking to Seavee Ditch. No matter what we do to Lake Charles, if the situation in Seavee Ditch doesn't improve, it's just going to happen over and over again. So, stabilizing the banks, the riparian zone, but there's a lot of partners, a lot of stakeholders we can bring into this, you know, the two upstream municipalities, unincorporated Lake County. Lake County Stormwater Management Commission has been really successful in getting 319 grants, that's a grant that Jed had mentioned. It's a grant given out by the IEPA, Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, specifically for projects like this. Lake Charles and Seavee Ditch are on the IEPA list of impaired waters, and they're part of a watershed plan. So, these two projects are teed up in the future to get grants, and it's a matter of getting stakeholder involvement, getting the county involved, and partnering with these different entities. The Lake County Health Department is also doing ongoing studies of the lake, and so they're a great organization also to get involved. And then, once you handle the upstream part, then you can begin looking at Lake Charles. And I think the aeration and the goose harassment could start probably immediately, but then when you look at dredging material out of Lake Charles, you want to weigh that cost versus, you know, where are you at with the upstream stabilization, because you'd hate to do a lot of dredging work only to find that filled back in with sediment.
Is there a chance that the aeration will drive?
The?
Lake Charles?
Lake Charles?
It's slowly converting to a wetland right now, so eventually, it would just be a giant marsh if left untreated.
And it'd take decades or years, too?
Well, it's, the fringe is wetland now. It's what we would call a, it's almost what we'd call a hemi-march, which would be 50% vegetation, 50% open water, it's almost to that hemi-march stage.
And in the Lake County Health Department reports, they had a chronology of photos, and the difference that you see in Lake Charles from the 1997 photo to the current photo was, was pretty outstanding.
Yeah.
They, for sure, that whole delta that's on the, the top of the lake, so that the area in the left photo in the yellow that were, one of the plans was to, to get rid of the sediment, the delta, that delta was not there in 1997.
Because, what do you think, five, six, seven acres?
No, that's about one and a half acres. The yellow triangle is about a one and a half acres.
But then, everything in the, so that's not the only sediment that's entered, you've got all the sediment that's in the bottom that's been slowly accumulating as well.
That section that's unincorporated Lake County, that, is that, that's the forest preserve land there, right? Isn't that part? preserve land there, right? Isn't that part of the Open Space Act from years ago?
Libertyville Township, Open Space.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's not county, it's Libertyville Township?
Libertyville Township.
Right.
Okay. Because that was the site that was looked at for potential expansion of Libertyville High School, so.
Yes.
You know what's nice about the township? Their binding authority is enormous. It really is. It's 8%, I think it's 5-8% of the whole township. Take that into account. I mean, we almost tried to partner with them to do white gear run, and it would be township and village for hills. But they got months, I mean, they could find out a lot.
And they're one of the partners we're looking to go on tour and talk to about participating in the grant process. But we'll let you continue and we'll get to that.
They've got about a half mile of that. If that, it's about a half mile, a little better than a half mile.
Is it?
You just hear about right, because it's the, it's that center section that's
Probably almost three quarters of a mile.
Yep. It's a little better than a half mile. Yep. That's, that's part of that.
It's 5,700.
This is 2850.
Oh, 2850, okay. Half mile, yeah.
How big are grants, these IEP A grants?
Just use an example for a project I'm working on now in Carpentersville. The project is a 1.2 million dollar total cost stream restoration. And so it's, whatever that works out to be, almost $880,000 was the grant.
So, 85%?
No, it was 60%. Yeah, 60. I'm sorry, I did my math wrong. I think it was, maybe it's 680. Yeah, it's, it's 60%. Now, for example, Darren knows about Lake County better than I do, but in DuPage County, you can combine grants. So Glendale Heights went for one. We're still working on it. 60% from IEP A and 25% from DuPage County, so they're only left with 15%, right?
You could also phase this.
For the towns.
And you would also phase this. You wouldn't do all 5.2 million dollars in one year. You probably, that, the grant we're talking about is every two years through the IEP A, so you would, you maybe come up with a plan to start hitting the most critical sections on two-year cycles, and hopefully, within 10 years, you've gotten a good chunk of that done. Do you help write those grants for villages? Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Dave, was that
Did, did you do anything further south of Lake Charles? Any evaluations or?
Not as part of this study, no.
Okay. And what is our confidence level in what's coming out of Lake Charles and going into Big Bear and Little Bear and, and then on downstream?
In, in terms of the larger factors with the sediment, it's dropping in Lake Charles. When we get to Big and Little Bear Lake, the good thing is those are extremely deep lakes by comparison.
And they're almost entirely riprapped on the shorelines, too, so you're not
They're definitely more stable, absolutely.
So you mentioned doing the, the mitigation of the, of the CV over five year, or five years or more. At what point would you, would you want to, to do the drainage then of the?
Normally, what we do in a stream restoration project like this, and we did it a little bit on the sketch-up here, we would go in and identify with more color coding, severe, moderate, minor, and, and, you know, good streaming. And we'd prioritize it. We'd break it down into those sections and help you phase it out. The first year or two, try to hit all those most severe locations, and then work our way back. Once you get to minor erosion, that's typical, you know, like that's, to me, minor means that's normal, everyday erosion that you'd have anyways, right? When you get to about that point, then you could start thinking about
Then you'd do the dredge.
Yeah, yeah.
What about Lake Harvey? Because that gets fed from Lake Charles, right?
We're very pleased that Harvey Lake has almost no tributary area. It's, it's basically just a small kettle. It doesn't experience the sedimentation issues or algae issues that we have here. We have a really good program in terms of treating Eurasian water milfoil, and, and it's working very well. So, I think our largest focus is appropriately Lake Charles.
Would it be beneficial to put in any additional aeration in Lake Harvey?
I, I think it would, just it's whether we can afford to do multiple lakes or not.
Well, I'm just, because
But it would be beneficial.
It's a quarter of the size, give or take.
You think we might get a better deal buying more aerators at the same time?
Well, no, it's just, I'm kind of just taking a one step further, you know.
Yeah. I, I guess what I would suggest is, let's look at the diffuser aerators for Lake Charles. Let's study it and see how that works. If it's successful, and we anticipate it will be, then we can look at Harvey Lake also.
Yeah, I was just saying, if there's a power source anywhere near at hand, I mean, we just use the surface aerators and, you know, like, like we've done here on the pond, just as a mitigation, if that has value. I don't know if that, if there's a cost benefit there or not.
A base cost for an aeration system for a lake that, let's say, from a one to maybe five acre lake, you're looking at about a $5,000 to $8,000 investment in the equipment.
Have you ever used, I'm sorry, I apologize. Thank you, okay.
Well, no, I was going to ask Dave Brown, would, based upon this information, what your perspective is on this for Lake Charles? What's your position, what's your position on this? Or what's your opinion and as far as, based upon their
Cut to the chase on this. So, what we're saying is, we'd like to move forward with the diffuser system. Money has been budgeted. I would just move within a line item, two different line items within the same account, and move the money over. We have money to move ahead with that. I'd like the, the board to support that recommendation.
Much?
$30,000 for the
How much do we have budgeted total for the year?
So, within that overall area, it also includes our open space maintenance, so we probably have $120,000 total in that account. So, moving $30,000 that we were planning for Harvey Lake and going into a first phase of some more severe restoration, we would move that $30,000 to Lake Charles instead as a higher priority. So, diffuser would be the number one recommendation. The second one is, my staff is moving forward north of Greg's Parkway. We will be removing buckthorn, swabbing it, and then restoring it with woodland grasses. So we're going to do that in-house to save the money. We'll have to pay for some materials. Very small costs will accomplish that. The next step is, we'd like to take the Burke report, and we'd like to go on tour, and we'd like to talk to all of our neighbors upstream, and at a minimum, get support for the project. We're, we're members of the Displanes River Watershed Group. We've had many conversations with that group about the importance of Lake Charles. We've met with the Health Department. They're going to do some additional studies and sampling for us, Big and Little Bear Lake and Lake Charles, so we'll work with them because that will help us in chasing down grants. I like where their recommendation is, instead of spending the 5.2 million dollars to stabilize the whole ditch, if we can work towards the Riparian Corridor Restoration, which essentially is removing the buckthorn and reseeding the, the area and get grasses to grow, that is a huge step at a reasonable cost, so we'd like to do that also. But I, I think a lot of this is going to be just trying to reduce some of the sediment loads at a lower cost while we work through grants. Displanes River Watershed Group has been doing a lot of sampling. They're making some good progress with that. With this data, it tells us where the impairments are, and within the watershed, we think that that group will support this project based on this study. So, those are the different steps that we'd like to do. And one question that I have for the two of you is something that's really important to Greg's Landing and Greg's Landing Homeowners Association, is the irrigation system is at the northwest side. That's where the sediment loading is happening and a delta is forming. So to try to mitigate the, the filling of the intake, what type of permitting will they have to go through to try to dredge that area? Okay, so dredging on its own is not a regulated activity, because you're, or the way that Corps of Engineers operates in Lake County, for the most part, operates is, you're not discharging dredged or filled material, you're removing. And so, removal on its own is not a regulated activity. So, depending on how you dredge, if you do divers or hydraulic dredging, you're just sucking it out and vacuuming it to a bag somewhere, that's what that picture kind of shows on the lower right-hand side. That's not, that's what we'd get, a letter of no objection from the Corps of Engineers to do that. So it's, it's a very straightforward, it's only a couple of weeks to get that approval, usually from, from the Corps, and usually almost as quick from the county. If you're going to do it conventionally, which is the picture on the left, that requires permitting, right? Because you're putting equipment out there and it's mucking everything up. So ideally, you'd use a hydraulic dredge. It could be like a bass boat-sized pontoon boat. They just vacuum out the goop and pump it to bags on the shore somewhere.
I was just going to ask you, if as part of your study, you looked at any of the root causes upstream in terms of, are there any of those stakeholders or businesses along there, any of the development, that either ignored recommendations from SMC or haven't implemented things like that, where perhaps, in addition to getting them interested in supporting our efforts, where they might actually bear some responsibility for this and, and have an obligation to participate in the funding?
I'm not aware of any violations. I think part of the issue with the upstream watershed, and you can see how dense it is to the left there, so much of that developed before the Lake County Watershed Development Ordinance went into effect. So things like stormwater detention, best management practices, all this whole area in Mundeline develops a long time before all that. So unfortunately, I don't think it's something we can point to that is, you know, occurred yesterday. It's just the whole process of development prior to our modern stormwater management practices is really what, what led to this.
Yeah, everything west of that comment right away was 50s or earlier.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's just, there's just been a complete lack of maintenance.
I was going back to aeration. In the process, could it be done also in-house? Because I
We, we would hire specialists to do that rather than doing it in-house.
Because I've done on smaller
The installation cost is a fraction of the purchase cost.
Yeah, from pumped and stuff, I've installed some in, some air
You do want a specialist to install it. There is technical, companies do this, you know, I wouldn't like say Burke could do it. There, there is a specialty to it.
Okay, Dr. Happen?
So, Dave, you commented on their, the use of, of the lake for irrigation purposes, and you suggested that, at what point would we, would we do dredging just for that purpose?
For this year's budget, we don't have the, the money budgeted to do that. In terms of, I think what I'd like to do is meet with Kevin and Don and try to work through a plan. Maybe we'll have discussions as far as what the cost would be and try to figure, get a better understanding.
I guess I'm still trying to understand, is it, what needs to be dredged just so that the irrigation can continue? Does that whole delta need to be dredged for, for the irrigation purposes, or is it
I think where we would head is, is, it's, it's over to the side where the intake is from the main line of the CV ditch. So there would be hydraulic dredging in front of where the intake is, but then it's going to create a hole that's just going to fill up with sediment. And so the recommendation is you would build some sort of weir or stone that would block the sediment and keep the water flowing through and over the dam, and somehow protecting it so the sediment loading doesn't fill this hole back in. So those are the steps we would do. And we could look at a smaller project just trying to address that, because that's pretty important in terms of making sure that irrigation system works.
Now, I got a question with the, you know, is it Plenti metrics study? Plenti, what they're doing in Libertyville? Who are the experts that actually measured anything that perks and anything that doesn't? They're doing that. They do a special assessment. They're not, you know, they're just going to, you know, charge everybody X amount of dollars if they got impervious surfaces on their, their business or their homes, all the above.
It's like a stormwater utility. A stormwater utility where you'd measure in the amount of impervious area and charge people?
Yeah, I mean, but they, I thought that's what they called it in, in the Herald, in the paper a few weeks ago. But, you know, so the question, yeah, because they basically, I don't know if they, you know, they bonded out, but they pay it with, you're all, everybody's going to get a bill without going to refer on them or anything. Now, would that include, does any of that include any of the CV or anything else?
I'm not aware of anything that Libertyville is doing as part of their stormwater master plan that would affect the CV.
Okay. Is, is there a potential for, I guess, the CV or, you know, who would, did they actually do something like that for, you know, all the stakeholders all along this to get it going?
That would be something I would recommend Lake County Stormwater Management start to coordinate that. I mean, they're the stormwater agency within, obviously, within the county that handles inter, it's going to be an inter-jurisdictional sort of issue. So they would be the ones that would want to, I think, start that process.
Well, yeah, it's a pretty big chunk there that's the open space.
Right, yeah.
There, there's a, you know, it's flush. Are they still collecting that tax? Do you pay an open space tax, Dave? On your bill, on your
I don't know, I can't.
You got to take a hard look at it.
I, I believe there is. I think I looked at my daughter's and I think she has.
I can pull it up and let you know in a minute.
Are they still charging her?
Yeah, she's in, she's in Libertyville Township.
But they've been born in the open space a decade, you know?
They're still paying off bonds, aren't they?
I don't know.
Can I?
I mean, that's another, in my opinion, another source of money.
Well, we're, we're looking at, what, like, five governmental agencies here? Mundeline, Vernon Hills, Libertyville, Libertyville Township, and the County of Lake.
Mundeline Park District and potentially LDOT because of Butterfield Road. I would add to those, to that list.
Can I ask, have you ever used or seen drones used to keep the Canadian geese away? I just Googled a, a site for a company that does that. Seems like it'd be more efficient than dogs.
We use drones for all sorts of things. We have not yet, not yet used them for chasing geese away.
Because it makes sense to
It kind of does, yeah, yeah.
Dave, they've used, actually, because they can't, if they can't land, you take, they have remote-controlled little boats.
Little boats to go on the water and just chase them around.
Off the water.
We can have like, we can even have like boat race days where the kids come out and chase the geese away.
We'll have an event, yes.
Yeah.
How about remote-controlled pontoon boat, you know, landing and taking off?
Any of those things. Seems, seems like better, better than, better than dogs.
Willing to start a new division.
The boats would get stuck in all the algae, though, I would think, unless they're hovercraft.
Okay, you guys want to keep rolling here?
I think that's it. That is the, we're done.
All right, well
Question to staff, the, the, whatever it was, 20, 30-page report, Annis PowerPoint, is this on our website? Yeah, especially their full report, because, you know, the, the full report is loaded with photos, you know, looking at all the various problems shoreline is in disrepair.
Okay. I, I, go ahead, Dr. Happen.
No, no, I already asked that.
Okay. Nah, it'd be too, too bizarre, but isn't, I think there's a process now that's being used that
nah, it'd, it'd be too, too bizarre, but isn't, I think there's a process now that's being used that maybe out in, I don't know, California or in the, in the, you know, the desert type areas where they got, you know, drinking water in these big reservoirs, okay? And I was wa, I was, I was watching something the other night or I like, I came on, you know, it was, it was maybe on the internet where they were, they actually filled these, these huge reservoirs with, with black balls.
It's for, uh, yeah, discouraging wildlife, yeah.
Yeah, but it, it also, I think it doesn't get, you know, there's no light going into it, so it's not throwing the algae, but it probably would, in all honesty, it would look like hell probably, you know?
They do it a lot at airports.
Do they?
Yeah, I mean, O'Hare has, if you go out, cause we help design some of the
To keep the geese out?
Wires and everything else to keep the geese out, yeah.
Yeah, okay. But I mean, they're using it now to protect the, obviously, the drinking water supplies.
Evaporate and keep the balls out of it, yep.
Maybe we could have multicolored ones and it'd look pretty cool, you know? Kids would go, holy, they'd all wanna jump in it like they're at the pit, you know, with the balls. All right, well, we're gonna do something, aren't we?
Absolutely. So, uh, per, uh, what I just stated, as far as what our steps are, that's what we're intending on doing. We'd like to move forward with the diffusers. Uh, we'd like to, uh, go on tour and talk to our, our neighbors about participating, at least getting some support, whether it's a support letter, whether it's financial, uh, and then pursue some grants. Uh, we'll have some discussions with Greg's Landing H O A and Burke will help us, uh, and we'll have some conversations about the irrigation intake and, uh, take a look at that a little bit closer too.
Would, would our park district be involved? Would the one parkway, you know, up on north, north of Huntington?
They could be one of our partners also. Yes.
Well, and there's Lake Charles Park.
Right, 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 yeah, okay. All right, well.
Thank you very much.
We're shorted, we're shorted twenty-two different taxing districts like we had for the Nike site. That was special, the screening process.
Twenty-two?
Twenty-two.
Wow.
Thank you.
Yeah. I go, how many? You wanna say anything, Kevin?
Mayor trustees, members of the staff.
Have you met these guys?
I know Chris Burke quite well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I went to school with him.
Yeah, well, there you go.
But, uh, no, I read, I read the, yeah, I went to Purdue.
Good.
Um, I read the report. It's an excellent report. They have a lot of different findings in there. Uh, I'm also president of the homeowners association.
Right.
And the one thing that, other than our own business, the one topic that comes up the most frequently is the continued degradation of Lake Charles.
Yeah, sure.
And so it is top of mind. You know, it's a benefit to everyone who lives in Greg's Landing, but it's a benefit to everyone who plays golf there. It's also a benefit to, anyone who uses the parks. So, I mean, and just the environment. And so I, it, uh, is definitely on top of mind for the H O A. Uh, I started off my career doing reports like this.
Yeah.
And I've come up with three different ideas that, uh, may help, that'll be less expensive than some of the alternatives proposed. I will write, I'm not prepared to go through those tonight, but I'm gonna come up with some of those things. I'll present them to the village, probably through David Brown.
Yeah, and they'll get to these guys.
And he can give it to them and they can see if, what I say makes sense or their alternatives are better.
Yeah, yeah, it's great.
Beautiful.
Oh, and the one question you had earlier about, uh, how deep, you know, the bath metric.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, topography map. Uh, the one part that's now, uh, one foot, or a little less than one foot, uh, in two thousand and two, it was five feet.
Wow.
So it's how much it's tilted in since, you know, the year after I moved in. And so that's one part that I actually saw a buck cross there at the time. There used to be more deer when there was less homes. And I thought he was gonna get stuck. I actually stopped to make sure he got out and took him a long time, but, um, no, you definitely can tell it's.
Well, share with these guys, Dave and, and obviously the two engineers here and, you know.
Okay.
Well, yeah, we're not gonna let this go by the wayside.
No, and I, the, the approach that, you know,
Yeah.
you know, Burke and Associates and, and David's mapped out and some of the things that we have here, that's, you're doing the things, I think, in the right order.
Yeah, and we might have another nineteen thousand dollars.
No, you can vote on that, uh.
Oh, yeah, it's coming up.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, well, anybody else want a comment on this one? This is a, this is a good one. I mean, we just discussed.
Yeah.
Okay, next is Vernon Hills High School District one twenty-eight, request for waiver of site development permit fees for building additions on their property located at one four five North Lakeview Parkway. Is there a motion to deny?
Motion to approve waiving the fee.
Second.
Okay, motion to second.
Before you, uh, call for a vote on this, um, I know in speaking with staff, um, I made the recommendation that the waiver be contingent upon, uh, each of the school districts executing an escrow agreement. Um, in the materials that were sent out, I had points out that, uh, the village, although it doesn't have the ability to issue building permits and so forth, it does have the ability to issue site permits. And, um, through that and the waiver of fees, there was a report put together by, uh, staff that identifies what those fees would be and what the cost of those site improvements are. Typically, we would require that there be a, uh, guarantee, a performance guarantee for those, um, improvements. Now, traditionally, if this was a private developer, we'd be looking at a letter of credit or a bond. Obviously, both of those vehicles have costs. So what we've done with the school districts is we've drafted an escrow agreement that in essence has them put the money into an escrow and then as they need to pay their contractors and the work gets done, it gets drawn out. So it's cost neutral to the school districts and yet still provides the, the village with the appropriate security to, uh, secu, secure the performance of those, uh, site improvements.
Okay.
They've not yet executed those agreements yet, and so my recommendation is that the waiver of fees, if it's going to be done, would be conditioned upon the es, the execution of the escrow agreements.
First agrees.
Second?
I suppose, I mean, you know.
I mean, it's nothing to set up an escrow account that's.
No, the money would be deposited with us anyway and just simply doled back out to them as they need to pay their contractors.
I know what the saying is, you know, uh, your mother says she loves you, get a second opinion or whatever. And or, you know, in God we trust, all others pay cash, yeah. I mean, this is our school district here though. I mean.
Well, if Dave is outside, Dave will tell you about a long and tortured history when the high school was built, about various site improvements in the parking lots and so forth, where there were a lot of failures and, and the grave difficulties he had in ultimately securing compliance.
I, I don't have a problem with an escrow because it won't cost them anything to re-set it up, so it's.
Okay. Provided it's cost neutral, the second has no problem.
Yeah, as long as it's cost neutral. I mean, cause as, as you stated, a letter of credit, that would require some fees and, and what's the point of waiving fees only to give them another fee?
Exactly.
Yeah, as long as it's cost neutral.
Agreement and they've already been giving it to them. They've had conversations with the high school district lawyers, et cetera.
Yeah.
We gotta, we gotta motion on the table, table to waive the, to waive the fees.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Including the escrow statement.
Yeah, but the escrow will go into play. Will, will be set up. Okay. All right, we gotta, well, you already got part of the roll call, right?
No, no. Roll call.
Okay, go ahead, roll call.
Didn't you wanna, I'm sorry. Didn't you wanna comment on it or make?
No, I already have it. I mean, I'm not gonna vote yes for it. I mean, you know, I mean, personally, that's.
Have we ever charged them before? No, so why do we start now?
We do it with all our school districts and it's, and it's to save the same constituency.
All right, yeah, what?
Well, also, we're, I mean, this is.
Maybe we could get a loan from them to do some work on the C V for the eighty, they got eighty million dollars.
I mean, it sounds great, but you can't.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't wanna get into a tit-for-tat with Libertyville also for them denying the school district for something that
We've always, we've always done it for all the districts.
Okay. All right, well, roll call.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Brown. President Byrne.
Well, Trustee Brown, gee, I know she'd vote no.
What?
I'll, 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 I'll vote no.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Okay, next motion is, uh, to waive Hawthorne School District, uh, seventy-three's, uh, site development permit fees for the kindergarten addition located at six three five Aspen Drive. Is there a motion to approve?
So made with the same, same contingency with the escrow. I made the motion.
Second.
And this is twenty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Correct?
Okay.
Have Mundaline help too.
Yeah, right. Uh, yeah, no kidding. Uh, roll call.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Brown. Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
What would Trustee Brown vote?
Aye, yeah, she'd be aye on this one. Okay, motion carries. All right, that's about it. Now we're going to close session.
Motion to adjourn committee of the whole meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Brown. President Byrne.
Aye. The meeting's adjourned. We're going into closed session. We will not come out and conduct any other business. Thank you and good night.
Did you enjoy it?
How old are you?
I'm sixteen.
You can, where do you go to school?
I actually go to Vernon High School.
Well, it's not bad, is it?